We're always happy to see citizens at city council. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, which is a listing of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. It's designed to expert like the handling of limited routine matters by council. I will ask if a citizen or a council member, if they wish to have any specific item removed from consent agenda prior to the vote, and at that time either the public or council member may request that an item be removed. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of June the 11th, 2019, approval of the expenditure vouchers of June the 25th, 2019, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license for Western refining retail doing business Speedway 9499, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license for Stokely Corporation doing businesses HandyMart, and approval of two special events permits for the Cortez Chamber of Commerce for business after hours, one to be held on July the 5th at Buffalo Bob's Co-op located on Milton Road, and the other on Thursday, July the 11th at the Cleaning and Restoration Experts located on South Broadway. At this time Jill, did you want to request?
Yeah, if we could take a look at the expenditure list, there's three charges on there I'd like to get some information on. The first is under the general fund, about four down, it's a payment to SIRSa for a special event for $944.77. Under the public safety category, there's a SIRSa payment for claim Marcell, $814.50, and then the Public Works General Fund SIRSa payment, claim Harper, $1,000. I would request that those be pulled out so we can get information on them.
Okay, is there anything else?
Nothing.
All right, in that case may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented and extract expenditures with the SIRSa stuff that's removed. A second.
Lou Sero.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Betts.
Hi.
Noiz.
Hi.
Levy.
Hi.
May I ask a question because it might help us in the future. Do you want more information about some payments like this as to what they're about or what they're for more specifically than just to some of it?
I think it would be helpful just because sometimes you look at them, sometimes you catch them and sometimes you don't, and when you look at them, sometimes if you think about it, you can figure it out, but a lot of times you can't. And it's just lots of, usually it's a real simple explanation, but if it was put in up front, it would save time and it would be helpful to me, I think.
How's the rest of the council feel?
Sounds like a good idea.
I agree.
Yes.
Fine.
John, can you respond to the questions that Jill had?
I can respond, and Dawn, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but the special event one is for additional insurance, and then the other two are payments to the attorneys who defend us for these claims.
So it was payment to the attorneys, it wasn't a settlement for these two individuals?
No, it's not, it's not a settlement.
It's just attorney costs.
So this just attorney cost for them?
So the special event insurance is for, we had two different events that bought coverage, they buy insurance with, the city has a vehicle to purchase insurance through SIRSa, and they reimburse us for that. So we will have a reimbursement in the full amount of that insurance policy. The Marcel claim was a vehicle accident, and that was the portion of the payment that was our premium. And then the third one was for the premium portion of another claim that by and large was attorney fees, but it was our premium portion.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, it does. In that case, I'd go ahead and make a motion to also approve the SIRSa payments that have been previously pulled from the expenditure list. Lou Sero.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Betts.
Hi.
Noiz.
Hi.
Levy.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi. We do have a presentation this evening, Representative SIRSa are here to inform council about member benefits, coverage, and claims processing.
I'm Courtney Fagan, I'm the Strategy and Member Engagement Manager with SIRSa, and this is Mike Wagner, our Claims Manager. Can you guys see, okay, perfect. So SIRSa is the municipal insurance pool for Colorado. There are, there's a special districts pool, a county pool, a school district pool, but SIRSa is the only pool in Colorado that covers municipalities specifically. We provide property liability and workers' comp services, and we are owned and governed by our members. We don't have any outside shareholders, so everything that we do is in the best interest of our members. Eighty-four percent of the cities and towns belong to SIRSa, and essentially all of the services, coverages, training programs that we offer are designed specifically for municipalities. One of the biggest distinctions between SIRSa and a commercial carrier is probably our safety training and loss control services. We offer a wealth of training and education in several different areas and in many different formats. We also come out annually to do a review of the city's written programs and inspect all of your property, playgrounds, water slides, and then work with city staff to create work plan developments to reduce future incidents and accidents. We have a couple certified industrial hygienist on staff that can come out and do air sampling, hearing conservation, mold, things like that. We also have a full-time training coordinator who travels around the state and offers customized training programs such as flager certification and defensive driving, confined space trenching, things like that. And we have 32 available onsite classroom and hands-on courses on similar topics, and we've also got an online university that's available to all city staff that has over 400 online courses that they can take at any time on a wide variety of topics. There's also classes specific to water and wastewater training that allows them to get their OCPO units. And they've got, city staff also has unlimited access to our training library, which has about 400 videos in that as well. We also have a huge, or a library of training for, specifically for elected officials. I don't know if you guys have ever had Tammy Tenoy come out and do training for you, but she's now our Executive Director, and Sam Light is our General Counsel, and he's able to come and do that for you if you're interested. We also have several coverage line articles, there's some online videos, webinars, and courses specific to elected and appointed officials, which is another area that really sets SIRSa apart from a commercial carrier. Because of our municipal specific focus, we also offer unique coverages and services tailored to municipal needs. We, free of charge, will review any of your contracts for insurance coverage. Our underwriting representatives can do that for you, and if SIRSa's General Counsel needs to step in and do that as well. And that's just meant to be an additional service that SIRSa offers to complement your city attorney. We also offer property appraisals that are done every five to seven years, and that's built into the SIRSa policy as well, where we come out and take a good look at all of your property, all of the buildings, playgrounds, plants, everything that you're covering, and give you an appraisal for that, just to make sure that you're valuing things at an appropriate amount. We also offer specific unique coverages such as non-monetary relief coverage, which includes Rule 106, executive session defense cost, and allegations of open meetings law violations, as well as in custody medical bills. And we provide indemnity for front and back wages for claims arising out of employment And in addition to the core property liability and workers' comp coverages that SIRSa offers, we also offer 11 optional coverages that you can select from to create a customized plan. These would include things like the special events program, excess liability cover, excess cyber liability coverage, we have a volunteer accident medical plan, equipment breakdown, all kinds of things, so that you can really build a policy that fits your needs. And we also work with brokers that have markets to place coverage for things like airport liability or bonds. So that's just kind of a little intro to SIRSa's coverages and services that we offer. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Well, good evening. Of course, you buy insurance, and you hope you never have a claim, but of course, eventually that comes, you do, and I'm the claim manager, and it comes to my department. And I was just going to cover just briefly our staff, our staff, how our claims processing is a little bit different than a standard carrier, and then how we, what we, the things we look at when we want to determine, when we're determining if we should settle or defend a claim. But first off, I thought it would be interesting to just let you see your claim history over the last two years. And this is just claims that have been reported to us since January of 2017. So there's 29 claims, and 21 of them fall out of very traditional insurance areas such as property, auto, auto liability, and general liability. And then we have the unusual areas that we get, that municipalities get into, which will be police, professional, and then also errors and omissions. And as you can see, that most of the money is spent on those last two. They're very complex claims, and they're difficult, they're difficult to evaluate, and they're difficult sometimes to defend, so. Our staff, so we've got nine claim reps, or nine people in the claims department, and we've got average experience of over 20 years for our claim reps. Some of them have been there as long, have been processing claims for as long as 30 years. And one of the things that sets us apart is that we have a West Slope presence, we have an adjuster up in Montrose, she's been there for over 20 years, and she handles a variety of claims. She's handled probably most of Cortez's claims over the past 20 years as well, so. Our claims reps are very knowledgeable with not only the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, but also how to process and how to evaluate police liability claims and federal claims, which is very different than a standard carrier. When you think about it, most big carriers have big regional offices, and they have claim staff that handle claims for multiple states. I used to work at a carrier just similar to that, and we handled everything west of the Mississippi. Our staff just handles Colorado losses, and we're very knowledgeable about Colorado law and how to, what to look at as far as the Governmental Immunity Act, what waivers of immunity there are, and how to, just how to process those. And then again, as federal law goes, there's a lot of, those are very complex losses as well. Very few adjusters out in the rest of the world are going to handle those. They're normally handled solely by attorneys. And because, because we insure 84% of municipalities, there's going to be very few other insurance companies that handle police claims. We're just, we're just pretty much it. We do have an on-call adjuster. We do respond after hours if we need, if you have a big emergency. We've had shootings, we've had buildings that have had cars run into them, we've had, well, the 2013 flood, we had lots of damage, and we responded after hours as well. And then we have a subrogation claim representative who actually is from Cortez, and she does a wonderful job. She pursues recovery for our members' losses, for like their property. And one of the unique things that we do that is different than a standard carrier is that we will not only recover money that we've paid out on a loss, but we'll also go after money on a non-covered claim or a claim that is under your deductible. Most insurance companies will not do that, they have to have issued a payment. So we do actively go out and pursue recovery. I think last year we got back about $1.6 million. So we do try very hard at bringing the money back into the pool for our members. How our claims process differs from a traditional carrier. You know, I think the big difference here is that SIRSa is for the benefit of municipalities. We're not, we're not a stock insurance company that is here for the benefit of making a profit. We're here for the benefit of our members and their equity, and helping the equity that they have in our loss fund. And I think that kind of filters down into how we handle claims. We try to approach this as a partnership. We want our members' involvement all throughout the claims process, and we actively seek that. There's times that we're not going to always agree on everything, but we're going to work that out. But when we get a, when we get a claim in, a liability claim in, it doesn't matter what type it is, we will automatically give a phone call or send an email over to Dawn. If it's a lawsuit, we're going to talk about it, we're going to do our investigation, we're going to come back to the city, we're going to say, this is what we think, we'd like to pay the claim, or we'd like to deny the claim, and we come to an agreement, and then we proceed in that manner. We don't just deny a claim. I don't know if anybody here's ever had a claim where they were at fault, but maybe if you did, you sent the claim over to your insurance company, and you never heard about it again. They did what they wanted to do, and that's not how we do things. We act, like I said, we actively want our members' participation. And we do, if something does go into suit, we're going to continue to keep our member involved. We do send quarterly litigation reports on those losses. We look for coverage, that's another big area. Again, we're not a profit-driven insurance carrier, we're here for the benefit of our members, and so we go out of our way to try to look for coverage. We try to see it from our members' point of view. Sometimes there's not going to be coverage, but we try to give our members the benefit of the doubt on any liability or property coverage. And then if our members have a big property loss, we're frequently their advocate. So what, SIRSa has retention on most property claims except for wind and hail of a million dollars, and if a loss was to go over that amount, then an excess carrier representative would be involved with handling that claim. And we don't then just back out of the picture, we stay actively involved because we know the insurance policy better than our members probably do. We work with it every day, and we want to make sure that our members get what they're supposed to out of the policy. So we will actively advocate for them. And then there's other claims that SIRSa places that we don't have, that you don't, we don't administer those claims. And one of those is equipment breakdown, that'd be the most common one. And what we'll do for those losses is we will file the claim for our member, and we will actually watch over that carrier. Right now for equipment breakdown, it's Chubb. And again, we'll, we'll work with the, work in between the member and Chubb to, again, make sure that everything is going smoothly. We can't make them issue a payment, but we can at least monitor it and make sure that it's going as best as, as best possible. And then there's other claims where we don't, where we may want to deny the claim, we'll talk, we'll get the city's approval for that, but, or agreement with that, that it's okay to deny it. But yet, it's one of those losses where you know you did something wrong, but there probably is governmental immunity for it, and we'll deny those claims, but then we'll continue to handle those losses if our member wants us to stay involved to the point of getting all the documentation, taking a release and everything. That doesn't happen a lot, but we do do, we do that periodically. And then we have, as Courtney mentioned, Sam Light, our General Counsel, he has an employment hotline, or a liability hotline, but he handles quite a few different things under that hotline. If the city was to have a problem with like disciplinary issues or hiring and termination, ADA, discrimination, all of these things, he's available to talk to. And one of the services that we offer is on some employment type issues where it's not, there's no claim that's been made yet, but there's, we want to make sure that it goes as best possible. We'll actually assign an attorney to help guide the city through that process, and that's one of those special things that, you know what, I don't think any other insurance company does, is that bill is never charged back to the city. It's something that we do, and we incur internally, that charge. And so, and again, as Courtney said, Sam is also available for council training and And then, this is probably the most difficult thing to talk about, when do we settle or when do we defend a claim? Sometimes it's really simple. You backed into a parked car, we're going to, that's an easy one. But there's other claims that are not easy. Police liability in particular is very difficult. And ever since the riots in Ferguson, Missouri in 2014, there's been the anti-police sentiment, and it's filtered into the courts, and it's made things difficult for us. But what, one of the things that, again, we look at is liability. What do we think as far as liability? If it's a police claim, we're going to be looking at federal law. If it's a state claim, we're going to be looking at state tort law and then the Governmental Immunity Act. Our members' thoughts on settlement or defense. It's very important that, that we get your input, because if it's a claim that we want to, say we want to deny it, but you don't want to, and it's, we're going to get a lawsuit on it, we're going to look at that really hard, because we're not going to have your support in that, and vice versa. I mean, we want to take your thoughts on defensive claim as well. And it's not a perfect science, there's no, I wish I could tell you there's some formula that we look at, but there's not. And we're evaluating all of these things on this list all the time with a lawsuit. It's a continual process. We're going to talk to other defendants, or have our defense attorneys talk to other defendants, like if it's a police case, and we have a couple of police officers that are, have been sued, we're going to get their thoughts as well. So we'll get the town's thoughts, or the city's thoughts, and then those individual officers when they're making our decision. One of the other things we're going to look at is uncovered claims. The big one is punitive damages. And punitive damages are not insurable, it's not something we provide insurance for, and we legally cannot provide insurance for that. But those are very concerning, because if someone, if an individual gets hit with punitive damages, then they can be significant. The venue of where the lawsuit is at is something we take into consideration. If it's a state, state district court, it's, we're going to look at it one way, if it's a federal district court, and then who's the judge? You know, the jurisdiction, you know, Manazuma is going to be, county is going to be way more conservative than Denver, and so that plays in into these claims, particularly with police, because the federal district court is up in Denver. And we will get, the majority of people that will show up on that jury panel are going to be from the Denver area, and they're going to have a little bit different thought on, on things probably than somebody from a rural area. So we do look at that as well. And the jury climate, again, I've just mentioned the riots in Ferguson, Missouri, and how police cases have changed. We used to get quite a few dispositive motions granted, and it doesn't happen very often anymore. Occasionally we do, but more often than not, the federal judges are going to find an issue of fact and push these claims to, try to get us to either settle it or push it to a trial, one or the other. And then we look at the likability of the plaintiff, is it somebody that the jury's going to like? And I should have put down here also the likability of the defendant. I mean, if we have a bad defendant, or if the defendant just wasn't on his best, wasn't having his best day when that, when that issue or whatever is, came about, we're going to look at that, that's going to be just another factor. Plaintiff counsel, for several, for federal civil rights claims, there's a couple of really big law firms in the Denver area with some extremely competent attorneys, and we're going to look at that and evaluate, are they, are they capable of providing a good, putting out their clients, presenting their case well at a trial? And then our defense counsel's thoughts on our ability to prevail at trial. And sometimes it's not whether or not we think somebody did something wrong, it's just a matter of the number of claims that are there, the light, our ability to feel comfortable in going forward. And then we're going to look at defense costs as well, because it does cost quite a bit of money to actually, to actually defend these. And then if it's a federal civil rights claims, plaintiff attorney's fees come into play, and they can be substantial. So we take all this into consideration, and so, you know, I've, back at the beginning, I showed one on the slide with your claims, I know that there was one claim in there with a $100,000 payment, it was a police claim. And like I said, sometimes it's not whether we think the officer did anything wrong or not, it's just that we add all of these things up, and we think, what's the likelihood, and how bad could it be? We had a claim, or a case that went to trial two years ago in a small town, and it was one that we felt was very defensible, although we did have the opportunity to try to settle it. Our member did not want to defend, or did not want to settle the claim, and so we took it several years through trial, spent $300,000 in defense cause. And at the end of the day, the jury came back with a $300,000 verdict, they hit the police chief and the police officer with punitive damages for over $400,000. We had to pay plaintiff attorney's fees for over half a million dollars. By the time we were all over and done with this, it was $1.3 million plus our defense cause. And the worst part about this is that the plaintiff was not a nice guy, and he now is in that town, and he's almost bulletproof. And he gets to stand up on the court step and say that you did me wrong. So it's just one of these, it's very difficult. These are extremely complicated cases, and I would go back to the training or the experience level of our adjusters, that having adjusters with 20-plus years' experience who do these claims day in and day out is very, very valuable, because it's very important that we identify these quickly, the bad cases quickly, and know which ones that we can defend as well, so. And that's what I had. Does anybody have any questions, Courtney?
Counsel, any questions?
I don't have any. No?
It's amazing, it's amazing all the services you provide. Do you find that you've been able to figure out what the, what the return on the investment is for you to come to communities and train staff and counsel and those kinds of things, what you're saving as far as?
I don't know, do we have that?
We, that's a hard thing to calculate, because, you know, it's hard to correlate those exactly. We are able We are able to pull like a cumulative list of all of the training that you've taken or that your staff has taken and we could provide that to you, but you know, it'd be hard to say if they got a training in 2016 if it prevented a claim in 2018. But our loss control manager would tell you that continually training employees keeps things top of mind and it's, you know, the education cannot do anything but help. And if that were to go away, then you would see claims rise. But we don't have a method of directly calculating that. I think you could do it over a period, like a period of five years if you started training in a specific area and wanted to measure that. And if that was something that the city wanted to do, we could look into.
I, I was just curious because you had, had mentioned that your, the other insurance companies don't provide that service, so.
Yeah, they don't. I mean, I, we've had a big push towards police claim prevention and like work comp claim prevention and that has made it, we've seen a noticeable difference across the entire source of pool. But I don't know if we've measured that specifically with a member. I know that we do, if members request that specifically, we can establish like a calculation and work with you on that.
Our, our loss control department has recently started a, it's a police liability roundtable. Well, they'll, they'll actually bring out one of our defense attorneys. And it's just one of those meetings where everybody sits down and they just talk about these, because the police officers have, these things happen to them and they might be really small and they just, they just don't know. And so they are able to ask the defense attorney, you know, if I did this, what am I looking at? Am I violating the person's rights or not? And sometime, and it doesn't take a very, very big or a very significant violation of somebody's civil rights to cost a lot of money. We have, there's several people that go around the state, they call it auditing, First Amendment auditing. And they'll actually have a cell phone out and they'll walk through a public building and they'll video things. And they'll wait for the, for a police officer to stop them, to arrest them, and it could be just for a minute. And they violated their civil rights and it will be very expensive. So we have, excuse me.
I was going to say, I have another question about whether or not you're developing any sort of trainings pertaining to determining reasonable suspicion. It was one of the things that came up at CML with regards to marijuana and testing for employment. And, you know, it sounds like it's something that's kind of looming on the horizon as far as whether or not we can lawfully continue to test someone as things get legalized. And I'm just curious if that's something that's on your horizon.
And I, I don't know. We'd have to get the loss control manager to answer that and coordinate.
As far, I just made a note, as far as I know, we're not, but would that be something that Sam could cover?
Possibly, yeah.
That might be some, I would encourage maybe Don to call Sam Light and have, see if he has any resources on that.
Okay.
Because I feel like there's probably a legal component to that, that our loss control team would.
Sure. And, and that's, that's why I'm concerned because from what I, what I know, it sounds like if you improperly test them without having reasonable suspicion, you're implicating some Fourth Amendment issues, which is government, government taking in, stepping in, so.
I will have Sam get in touch with Don about that.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the gifts.
You're welcome. There's a bunch of brochures in that folder as well, talking about all of our services and optional coverage programs too. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out anytime.
Thanks.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Oh, and Don has cookies for you too after this.
Don has what?
Supervisors. We brought cookies too. Don's going to hand them out after this.
Don Forkamove, please.
From the absolute bakery cafe.
Thank you.
All right. Under public hearings, we have a quasi judicial matter review of a change of ownership and new license of a retail marijuana store, Livewell. Mike?
What we have is, Mike, is your phone?
Mike.
I've got to turn this on and I'm going to learn yet. There was a change in the ownership, ownership structure of Livewell, which some of us know more familiarly as the Green Kiwi, is the parent corporation. And I believe there was 18% was gifted to a family member. That's a significant change and so it requires your approval. We've done the background check on the new owner. We've checked everything that we needed to check, just like for a new license. And we would, staff recommends approval with the paragraph that's on the, under the, what, under the quasi judicial announcement being read into the record as well as the findings.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions?
So we've established that anything greater than 10% requires?
It's, it's a combination of us and the state law.
And the state actually says greater than 10%?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't know that. Thank you. That's the only question I have.
So Mike, do we, like, once it becomes that time, I know we have to do the hearing, but do we, if we were going to approve it, do we make the motion and then read the paragraph?
Read the paragraph as part of the motion, please. I'm seeing you motion to approve finding that.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I have to open it up to public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this change of ownership and new licensing? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, I'm closing the public hearing. If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that the change in ownership structure of this license will result in a person's interest greater than 10%. The council has considered all of the requirements under City Code Section 15-414 and finds no reasons to deny the change of ownership application for a retail marijuana store for Green Kiwi 4 LLC doing business as Livewell located at 1819 East Main Street, Cortez.
Second.
Noise?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Betts?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lou Sero?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. Right. We have no unfinished business and one item of new business, the 2019 professional design services for the South Neighborhood Park. Dean?
Yes, good evening, City Council. The Parks and Recreation Department and Public Works Department solicited bids for professional design services from qualified professional design consultants to provide civil site, landscape architectural and architectural design services and construction contract document preparation services for the city's South Neighborhood Park. The bids were open on Thursday, June 6th with three professional design consultants submitting bid proposals. The lowest bidder being DHM Design out of Durango, Colorado with a bid of $92,753. The second lowest bidder being Connect One Design out of Basalt, Colorado with a design, with a bid, excuse me, of $95,130. The highest bidder being Davis Engineering Service out of Pagosa Springs, Colorado with a bid of $173,438. So following the bid opening, two of the three professional design consultants, DHM Design and Connect One Design, were interviewed by a selection committee composed of city staff members on June 14th. After interviewing each team of consultants, the selection committee discussed pros and cons of each team of consultants and gave their input with a consensus reached the same day. Based on the professional design services and constructing numerous parks and years of experience and working together as a team, we're recommending to select DHM Design Team for our professional design consultants for the city's South Neighborhood Park. The bid of $92,753 will be funded by two different funding sources with $50,000 from the Great Outdoors Colorado grant funds, which we, we received notification in March of this year. And then $42,753 from the Conservation Trust Funds for the remaining amount. Staff recommends to, to approve the DHM Design bid of $92,753. I guess, one, one comment I would like to make too, when you're, if you're wondering like from Public Works, that we both, we had both of our city engineers on the, on the interview team and, and, you know, they, they were very critical in our decision-making process with that. And they'll be very involved in this whole process all the way through.
Basically, this is, this is like the infrastructure, the?
Correct. I mean, yes. So right now we have the conceptual, which is just as it looks, but we don't have specificities of where the utilities will go, exactly what the grades will be, you know, just, just making sure the placement and every, everything and the whole project aligns. So they will looking, they'll be doing this work from the vantage point of developing all, all the property of the 11, 11 acres. I mean, including how it aligns with the street, the street portion as well. That's also included. So it'll, it'll be the whole caveat of the whole, whole park design and then we'll have construction, I guess, contract documents prepared for phase one. Which is, you know, as you, I think most of you know, is the, the most easterly portion of the property.
So, so will they, will part of this then be for them to, to develop multiple phases or are there just?
Correct, correct. We, we have it laid out in three different phases and, but, you know, it only makes sense they would do the whole, the entire design so every, every portion of this fits together and we don't have to make huge adjustments later on.
So, so this bid covers all three phases, right? There'll be no more design after this?
The, that's the way I understand it. It should be taking care of the whole park design. I mean, far as, you know, construction gradients, you know, where everything's placed.
Is this contingent upon receiving funding, the con, the contract?
Not, not, not this portion. There's not, I guess there's no funding that's, I mean, the GOCO funding is already tied into this that we've already received. So there's no other funding that we're?
You've received checks already for this? Or you've just received grants that you submit reimbursement for? I guess I'm just wanting to understand.
Yeah, the, well, the Great Outdoors Colorado, the 50,000, we, it's a matter of you've got to submit, submit for that money, Mike, but we've been awarded the $350,000 grant. So it's just making progress, you know, progress reports and then you get paid off of those reports.
And then you said there was another grant?
Well, no, this is, the other amount was the Conservation Trust Funds monies, which are based off of the per capita income that we annually get, you know. I, I could make the comment, they have been held up due to the audits. But as soon as we get the audits submitted to the Department of Local Affairs, we then will receive that money.
And that's what I guess my question is, are we going to run into any payment problems? I mean, I don't, when does, when do they start work and when do they expect paid?
Okay, well, upon, if this is approved, they will start work around the middle of July and it will, it will be, I guess their timeline had through about the end of December. So, and there will be, there will be a 30% design, a 60% design and a 90% design. The 30% design, which is most of the base cost estimates of what it would take like for phase one, would be by about the middle to end of August. And then the 60% design would be, should be completed by about the end of September within the 90% being done about the first part of November. The, the, the critical thing of moving forward with this is by getting these more exact numbers, it helps give you stronger applications for your grants. We're wanting to go out for a Colorado Health Foundation grant October 15th and, and this, this information will be critical on us going out to give specific numbers to the Colorado Health Foundation of what our costs are anticipated to be. And also for other grants too. The more, the more down the road you are with these projects, the more likely of, of receiving funding.
Do we, do we pay for this out of the general fund and then reimburse ourselves once GOCO pays us back and the, and the Conservation Trust?
That, that's correct, Councilman Keel, that is correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so the 42,000 then, that you said was held up by the audits?
Yes.
So unless those audits goes through, we don't get paid that back, right? Like, we have to wait for those audits to get that paid back?
Correct, that's correct. I, I just want to be fully transparent. I mean, we need to be, that's, that's exactly how this would be happening.
Well, will we get the Conservation Trust money without an audit? I, I guess I'm, that's what I, where I was headed with this, do we, are we, you're going to have to pay this out of the general fund then if you don't have the audits done and you don't have the funding, correct?
That, that's correct.
We'll have to change your budget somehow to get that done.
Right. Originally, originally we thought we would be further along in the process, project with construction and whatnot. So we budgeted actually as much in general fund monies for this project that would be more than what this amount is. And for all intents and purposes, this is as far as we're going to get this year is through these construction documents. So we, we did budget general fund monies for this project, which exceed what we have, we're requesting right now. So it would be, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul, but it, we, we have that in, budgeted in the budget right now.
Any other questions? Hi, I have a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we award the professional design services for the city's South Neighborhood Park project to DHM Design Team with a bid of $92,753.
Second.
Aye.
Noise?
Nate.
Lou Sero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay. We have no draft resolutions or ordinances, no other items of business. My apologies, I didn't ask for citizen participation at the beginning of the meeting tonight. I was so excited to have SERSA make their participation, I completely forgot. Anyway, is there, is there anybody in the audience that would like to directly address counsel? Okay. Uh, there is no city attorney's report. John?
I will keep this fairly brief. Last week I was at, on Tuesday I was at the SERSA board meeting and then on Wednesday through Friday, I was at the Colorado Municipal League meeting. I attended the meeting on the First Amendment audits and on Monday morning, I talked that over with Roy. Also attended social media, evaluation of appointed officials, the employment training. The social media, we, Matt has given me a revised personnel manual that I was waiting to go to this because I knew I was going to get some of this stuff. So I will now review that and bring questions back to him. It was very informative. There was only one dud that I attended, but it was, for most part, it was attorney stuff. So I was told it was all going to be boring, but it was pretty good.
It was, it was really good.
The attorney?
And I would just say to anybody, I didn't, I went my first year I was elected, I didn't really get the benefit of it. Now that I've been on council for a couple of years, I learned so much. I would, I would really recommend those of you that are, that are going to be here for a couple of years, try to go next year. It was really good.
And the, the attorney stuff, everybody but the attorney seems to want to go to when you go up there because we can't, we can't get into it.
That's so we know what in the heck you guys are talking about, Mike. Anything else, John? Okay. Are there any committee reports? Has anybody been anywhere? Mike?
Yeah, I attended the Parks and Rec and Forest Advisory Board meeting on Wednesday, July 19th and it was held at the Carpenter Natural Area. And the, the board members and were there with a, a... Conservation Corps project. And it's very informative to see how they engineered these switchbacks. They're trying to eliminate the straight up and down paths that cause erosion that are hard to hike on also. So they made these nice switchbacks and, and we're looking at different ideas how to improve the switchbacks and the water dams, funnel the water off those trails. And it's, it's a very good session. And we also visited the picnic area over by the pond and we noticed the, the city and the, in some of the Conservation Corps people provided mulch around the, around this picnic area bench and it's, it was presented by Rory Walker, an Eagle Scout, several years ago. And it was just before, it was just a concrete pad with a picnic bench on it. And this time it's, it was all kind of landscaped with this nice mulch and made it very conducive to walking down there and sitting there and it's right by the pond and the trees. It's, it's a very nice area. So if you haven't been there lately, go visit it. I recommend it.
You mean the pond at the Carpenter?
Uh, yeah, Carpenter area, yeah. And it kind of fills up, a lot of water in it this year. Wild birds.
All right. Any other? Any other meetings? I would like to say something before we do. Was that the 4th of July coming up? And I'd just like if you would just take a few moments on the board and think about why we really celebrate what the Declaration of Independence means to us and our freedom and how many people lost blood to get us that freedom. And with that, I hope everybody has trained for it. That would be good. Nice reminder, Sue. Yes. Report on the workshop, we basically spent, we, we invited the members of planning and zoning to come and share in our workshop and Tracy Hughes spent the bulk of the time discussing a variety of things that have come up as far as the land use, the land use code is concerned. We discussed proposals, design standard edits, public comment on landscaping requirements, limited and conditional use standards, invested property rights. The purpose of it was primarily to give her a little bit more guidance so that she could then go through and make the additional necessary changes so that at some point we might actually be able to get this approved. So many years and counting. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
Abigail, you'll be tested on all this tomorrow. Your mom's going to give you a test over everything you heard, so I hope you're paying attention. It's 250 questions.
Ty, I will be at your golf advisory board in the morning, 7:00 AM.
Thank you. And Dean, thanks. Thank you, Joe.
I had to set like 15 alarms in my phone so I remember.
All right, a nice meeting, adjourned.